All the orders, the New Philadelphia Board of Education Board Meeting for August 16th, 2021. Start with our. Thanks. Okay. I'm like, sometimes I hear things. I'll start with our mission statement. The New Philadelphia City Schools will provide all students the opportunity to achieve their highest potential to become educated, self-sufficient and responsible citizens. We are committed to providing every student a diverse quality education within a safe and secure environment through a dedicated, innovative and highly qualified staff in partnership with parents and the community at large. Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. France?
President.
Dr. Fuller?
Here.
Mr. Gallantyne?
Yes.
Ms. Sleeper?
President.
Mr. Weaver?
Here.
We have a quorum. Item two, approval of the agenda. I have an addendum I'd like to add to the agenda. Listed under Treasurers Report, delete item actually, an addendum with a deletion and an addition. So delete item Q from the agenda to approve this stadium lease as adopted by the New Philadelphia City Council and approve the superintendent's negotiated counterproposal on behalf of the board for the stadium lease that was adopted by the New Philadelphia City Council.
Move with the addendum.
Second?
Second.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Dr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Gallantyne?
Yes.
Ms. Sleeper?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, approve the minutes from the work session and the meetings.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Gallantyne?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. France?
Yes.
Dr. Fuller? Ms. Sleeper?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four is public participation. We have Jennifer Flaherty.
I'm watching.
It's a new system. We're still working.
My address is 320 Madison Street Dover. I am employed by New Philly City Schools as a substitute secretary and paraprofessional. And me just being a person, I'm not sure if I'm in the correct order of command and if I'm not, then you can redirect me. But I would like the board to consider and look at giving substitute paraprofessionals and secretaries a raise. We currently make minimum wage. So you might ask yourself, well, Mrs. Flaherty, we have some paraprofessional jobs if I don't get a full-time job. A full-time job does not work for me. I have a child with special needs that is 21 years old. And I don't know if you know or not, but it's very hard to find someone to sit with a 21-year-old. Currently, he's not in a day-hab program, so he is at home. So a full-time job does not work. Substitute job is wonderful because I can plan ahead and get that stuff done. But in today's world, making minimum wage is really, really low for what we do. I have worked in M D units. I have worked in autism units. I've worked in Level Two. I've worked in Level Three. I have done short-term setting. I've done three-month long-term setting. I've done secretary. So I've been in the school district. Like I said, this will be my seventh year. I could go get a job at Long John Silver's, but that's not where my heart is. My heart is with kids. My heart is with kids with disabilities. My heart is with kids that have behavior problems. And you, as a board, I would think you would want that kind of employee. You know, so that is, this is my job. This is what I love to do. But I also know that on the other hand, as a substitute, we, just like the rest of the current professionals, we get bit, we get hit, we get scratched, we get everything else. So I just would like you to consider that. We got our papers this year to be substitute secretary to fill out what we wanted to do. And the paper said 840. Well, I called the office and I'm like, wait a second here, that's Jeremy 880. And she's like, oh, that's a mistake. That's been a long time ago. Well, that kind of then insults me too, or offended me, whatever, because that's an old paper that they knew was old and they sent it to me. I mean, I'm not even worth real new updated paperwork. You know, so that just, but it is what it is. And like I said, I love my job. I love the people I work with. I love my kids. And I, you don't consider that, or if that doesn't happen, I'm not leaving. This is what I love to do. So I'd just like you to consider that. And like I said, if I'm in the wrong place, need to go to somebody else. If you direct me in that position, I would let, I'd like to talk to them too. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Is that something that needs to be negotiated? Is that something that can come as a directive out of this building? How does that work for pay for?
Subs are not negotiated. The subs are outside of the negotiated agreement. All the others, parapros, all of those other positions are inside of the negotiated agreement.
Okay.
How much lower, if I'm full-time paraprofessional, how much do I make for a starting salary?
Starting is about $12.51.
So this is 880, am I correct?
I think it is, yes.
Yeah, so you're looking at almost $4 difference. Okay.
Just something for you to consider, you know?
Yeah, that is quite a difference.
Definitely consider it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Item five, Treasurers Report.
Okay, so I have provided in the folder and I, first of all, I guess I want to start out by saying if you've noticed all the new cameras and equipment, this allows us to video everything and it will be loud enough that we can load it up on YouTube and it can be translated by anybody that wants it translated. So we will, this is the first step. Once I get it loaded, we'll attempt the translation to make sure it works. I'm sort of feeling good about just getting it working tonight, so bear with me. So I've provided the financial statement, the key indicator, the cash flow and the check register. Those are July's reports. I will tell you, the key indicator, the budget piece of that is not updated yet because all of those numbers are still coming in with House Bill 110. I'm still in webinars to figure out what our budgets are going to be for our school foundation monies. So I didn't adjust from last year until we get those finalized. And if you looked at our key indicator, we've already received 3.2 million of our tax revenue, which last year this time, that was when we hadn't received any tax revenue due to COVID and had some issues there. So we're in good shape cash flow-wise now compared to where we were last year. I'm also, I also have the QDA financial reports, the QPA financial reports. Make sure to take a look at those. We're required as sponsors for our board to understand and take a look at those. The bank reconciliation, which is balanced to the penny. You'll notice this is something new. I've given you the annual financial report from Red Tree Investments and it's for one certain group of investments. Ohio Revised Code requires that I provided that, provide that to you as the board. And I also had to provide that to the state superintendent and the auditor of state. So that's why that's on there and that's new. Our K-12 tech agreement, that's our repairs to Chromebooks and that's approximately what we paid last year. So that's, I know it looks like a lot of money, but in order to keep all our tech in play, that's what it takes. So I don't know if we're going to do anything about that one. We have one employee that's requesting FMLA. I asked for the annual transfer that we do for Stadium PI. My certificate of estimated resources and appropriation adjustments, those are minor adjustments. We're still bringing everybody into the new school year, so we have a few 018 adjustments. We do have two of our our constituents who made donations. I wanted to have you approve those. I will send thank you letters so that they can put those on their tax return if they're capable of doing that. And then last in this section is approving the contract for Connie Griffin. She's a former superintendent to be our temporary transportation director during the time that our current transportation director is kind of out of play due to surgery. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll move.
Dr. Fuller?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions for me? That was a lot of information really fast.
So the contract with Ms. Griffin, that's up to 31 days, not necessarily 31 days.
Right. It's when our transportation director is capable of managing things from wherever she's going to be, then she will step back. She is just basically helping us.
To be here when we need
Yes.
a body to make a decision to
Correct.
Give some direction to whatever.
Thursday on the 25th, I would expect her to be over at the middle school, high school. She has 20 years of experience as a superintendent and very in-depth experience in transportation. When Connie and I actually talked to her, I'm sorry. When Amy and I actually talked to her, she came in with a list of questions and I have to tell you, I was like, oh my gosh, I didn't even know to ask those questions. So I felt that it was a good thing to have somebody help us out.
And it sure makes sense to have somebody help us out. I guess just clarification on the per day. Is that person working every day, I mean, in a five-day work week? Or is this person working just the days we think we need somebody or?
She's going to be available when we need her. She currently has her own challenges and there are a couple of days that she can't be here. But she's planning to be here from nine to five. Actually, originally she said she'll probably be out here while buses are out. And I sort of explained to her, I don't think that's possible because we have buses out all hours.
Okay.
Year nine to five.
Okay, and it'll be for the full day, but it won't necessarily be every day of the week.
Correct.
Yep, got it. Thank you. I have one other question. Do we, on the tech agreement and repairing for the Chromebooks, it seems logical if we have that many devices out that this would be an annual thing to maintain or deal with. If that's, I guess, one, is that the case? And if it is, do we build that into forecast or is that part of what we just figure every year we're going to count on as an expense or how's that work?
I build it into the forecast. But the one thing, this is, so what happens is we have so many devices we ship back to them.
Okay.
And then they charge us ratably. So there's, like last year, we ended up having like $10,000 we didn't use on that contract.
Okay.
We also had a shortage of devices, so they sent us devices in, charged us for those, but they, then they gave us, they gave us a refund back on those. So they've worked really well with us. So they'll work on this contract, but I need to have the highest dollar value approved. I can tell you, it's surprising how the Chromebooks come back in sometimes. Last year, we had one painted pink. We had one that was torched. We had a number of different things happened and, you know, they take them, if they can repair them, they repair them. We test them here before they go out to make sure it's not just a connection issue.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Is public participation only during the initial, I just had a quick question or a question?
It typically is, but will the board entertain?
Sure.
Yes, please.
Obviously, I'm here for this taking lease. And, and I applaud superintendent Wentworth because we probably accomplished more or there's been more dialogue and more listening in the last 16 days than the previous 16 months. As far as city council, like we can't wait another month or whenever your next board meeting is. Because this is, right now, all the liability falls on the city of Philadelphia. So somebody does get struck by lightning without a lease, it's falling on the city. And, you know, the students and everybody that are out there is putting the city at risk. I don't know if there's a way to have a special board meeting soon. I know there's been a couple of developments late. And I know it's thrown on you guys. Just probably not enough time. However, I'd say I don't think we can go another month and then go back to city council. And by that time, we're probably looking at least October, if not December. So if you at least take that into consideration.
Sure.
We would greatly appreciate that.
Sounds great.
For France back in February, I believe he came to the city council meeting saying that it was important that we get this lease wrapped up.
Yep, absolutely. And some things came up that superintendent got another job. And there's a lot of, a lot of moving parts that needed to be addressed. And as I'm sure you also recall, we made many offers to have special meetings. And I'm certain that my colleagues here on the board would still honor that. That if a special media, if, if we can get something workable, something doable, and then we need to call a special meeting to get it done, that, I mean, we're all here right now. I don't have any reason that we would change that. We've committed to that. The board for the 14 years that I've been on it has been very steadfast to what it says it's going to do. We do it.
Sure.
So yeah, that, that certainly, that offer to meet outside of our normal timeframe still stands.
Okay, great. I just know that I was going through the budget and I'm extremely busy trying to squeeze those meetings in.
There's a lot of things that caused it. I mean, it sat there for five weeks until it got, you guys voted on it till we got it.
You know, it was approved by council.
I understand that, but we need to get, okay, that's, that's, that's semantics.
So I'm going to say, can we get through P and then go to Q to talk about the lease? So we can wrap up her report and then talk all about the pieces and parts of the lease.
From Q's. Hold, we have another action item after.
Separate.
Okay.
Q, yeah, the stadium lease is separate. Sorry, so just the logistical components of wrapping up P to move to Q. Sorry, no, that's okay.
I need to call roll on my perception though.
And then we're going to Q.
Mr. Gallantyne?
Yes.
Dr. Fuller? Mr. France?
Yes.
Ms. Sleeper?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. And then on the addendum, action item R is deleting Q from the agenda. Action item S, S, sorry, is approve the superintendent's negotiated counterproposal on behalf of the board for the stadium lease that was adopted by the New Philadelphia City Council. I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Yeah, move. I'll second.
Discussion?
It's my third board meeting. Have you guys, have you guys had a chance, have you guys had a chance to read her proposal?
No, out of respect for city council and stuff, I wanted the board to have, I didn't want city council to go to a board member and say, I heard this, when, when the board members had not
Super.
had a chance to read superintendent Wentworth's ideas at that point in time.
Great. And I did share those ideas with all of you so that you could review them. So I want to open this up for discussion, prefaces by saying that I did have some communication with Law Director Fait who indicated that it was appropriate for us to offer a counterproposal and it would be appropriate with your authorization for me to do that. And so that is action item S, that you would authorize me to do that. And my suggestions for the starting point for this proposal is listed here. I believe that we can accept all parts of the city lease or the lease as the city adopted it, except Article 7, and I'd like to change it in the way that I proposed here for you today. So with that, open it up for discussion and other questions regarding that.
I appreciate all the work that's went into this. I like the additions to it. I like the last sentence in paragraph one about comparable activities that may be added in the future. That seems reasonable to me to cover stuff that may come up that we've been concerned about. I, I just, it's not like it's a deal breaker for me, but when we start to get specific, I think that that generates opportunities for conflict. It's, it's, and we've got several very specific reasons stated in here. I, I've had that concern all along. But it does concern me that we list, what is it, one, two, three, four, five, six specific reasons. I feel like the school needs to be able to utilize that as necessary to enhance the education of the children in the district. I mean, that's, we talk about it here all the time.
Is it, am I correct me on this? The end of the sentence that Amy put in there says, or other comparable activities that may be added in the future. Does that cover your concern?
I think that helps, but at the same time, Danny, if we go down two more paragraphs where it says that the general public will have the free open access, yada, 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 specifically track lane seven and eight. I don't want some knucklehead football coach or athletic director or superintendent running out there and yelling at somebody because they're walking on lane three. If we're not using it, we're not using it. That's what the schools maintained all along. If we're not using it, this community is more than welcome to use it. And why we would limit them to seven and eight, I know why we originally did, or I think I know why. We originally did on some of the placards that were placed outside of the stadium way back when the All Weather Track was first installed. I could be wrong on this, but to the best of my recollection, lanes seven and eight were specified on that placard. And I don't know if there's any track people in here or not. Rob is, okay, so Rob's a track guy. It seems to me we did that because most conventional track meets take place on lanes one through six. And they didn't want to cause excessive wear to the lanes that were going to be used, which I've walked out there. I've been out there. We've all seen, I, I, as a non-runner, can't see any difference between lane two and lane eight, to be quite honest with you. I think that limiting, the same way that I think it's a little excessive to list these six specific reasons to restrict access. I think it's not right to list that you can technically, I mean, I would hate to see somebody employed by this district running around with this lease and seven and eight, you're in four. Yeah, that's ridiculous. I, I, I just, I, that's, I want to be fair. I, I, I want to look at it from all sides. And so those two things that kind of stuck out to me as I read it, that maybe if it would, I think, be helpful for folks moving forward if things were a little more vague and everybody worked together. Does it say seven and eight on here?
Yeah.
It does. And that, yeah, that's right on the fence when you walk in.
Yeah, I don't know if that's an original one or if it's.
Two months ago, tops.
Well, I don't know if this is original or if it's just recreated or, but I seem to think for some reason that that lane seven and eight goes all the way back to when the All Weather Track was installed. And I don't know why I think that, but.
Protect the track.
Yeah. What is true at track meets that they funnel down to the inner lanes and seven and eight or have less use than the inside lanes, so.
But at 13 years in, can we tell the difference between lane eight and lane two? And I guess if we can't, I don't see a reason to restrict the access or to give, I don't really see us as restricting the access here. I see that part of this agreement as giving some official in this school district the ability to go out there and complain about somebody being anywhere but lane seven and eight.
So you're suggesting we actually open up the opportunities for public use?
Just the track. Just call it the track. I would take any reference to anything specific out of this. If, if I had my brothers, I would take anything specific out of it. Dave Brand and Joel Day worked so seamlessly and collegially when this all went down to make it available, to maximize the availability to the community. I've got confidence that that can happen again. If, if it ever happens again, I just don't see a reason to put in a reason to nitpick.
Well, I guess, appreciate the commentary there, Dave, in your position. Yes, for, for me, I, for what we're approving there as far as approving superintendent to negotiate a counter, I'm all for. And I think to your point, Mr. Mauer, the sooner the better. And square away what it is, personally, I could live with this language. I had issues with some of what was in the other one, just from the standpoint of, I don't think it's right to approve an agreement that, you know, you can't live up to. And if you're bound to violate it, why put it into the agreement even though it would be up to somebody to find some fault with it? I just, you know, personally, when it comes to agreements, would rather not agree to something knowing that I'm not sure I can live up to this. It won't be intentional, but if somebody wanted to make it an issue, now it becomes an issue. So especially given the longevity, you were trying to get a 50-year lease. I'm not going to be here if that ends, but a lot of people in our community, but God bless you. But I think, obviously, we want the same thing when it comes to, we've got a jewel in our community that gets a lot of school use. It gets a lot of community used. Everybody wants to be used. And so when it comes to the specifics, I guess I'd leave it to, to, to Mrs. Wentworth and whoever is the appropriate person, whether it's city council in total or the mayor or the council, whoever is responsible probably need a little direction to say, hey, let's get something we can live with. Let's get something that the council can live with. And then back to the question about how quickly we could act, I guess, what I picture is can we not get language everybody can live with? And then as soon as it requires action, as soon as council can act and as soon as the board can act, if we need to have a special meeting to come in here for five minutes to approve it on a Thursday morning, then let's do it.
Sure.
You know, if that's the day after the council approves it, then let's do it the day after council approves it would be my suggestion. And so for me, into these agreements, you can probably find back to the, you know, not that you're nitpicking, Dave, but you know, trying to find language everybody can agree to. You know, sometimes, you know, if somebody wants a chow instead of mustard or this ended in a war or whatever. But end of the day, I think it's, your scene seems close and with the right spirit of knowing that we're trying to resolve it. Let's get it together with the right people and get it done. Be my take. So I appreciate the, the counter and I think it's a pretty good reflection of trying to address positively some of the minor issues we had with the last one. Be my take.
And then if, so as we approve or if we approve for Amy to be able to do that, you guys can get council working quickly, get it back and.
Yes. Counterproposal.
Okay.
Once that's done, then it'll go back to council, then it'll be up to them whether or not they want to approve the formal counterproposal.
Okay.
And I have no idea because like I say, it hasn't been shared with them.
Okay.
Just, I wanted to.
True.
Or to see it not here on the street. So, but yeah, we do all have the same. You know, we just want the public to have access to the stadiums, you know, citizens of New Philadelphia that stadium. And, and I wouldn't want my 83-year-old dad walking sidewalk. If he enjoyed walking, I wouldn't want him out there walking sidewalks.
Yeah.
More would it be safe? I mean, I don't know if he'd probably hit the curb and fall over, but you know, it is a form of if, if, for the seniors to go out there and walk or for anybody that walks. It is a form of therapy and it's a safe place to go. And, you know, like last year during the pandemic, you know, every meeting I walked into, I asked, you know, what the reasons were for it to be closed. And, you know, I just, Superintendent Wentworth just sent me like six documents from ODH that, that, you know, I never received that stuff back when I was asking for it. And a few days, I had it. You know, it's, it's been great so far.
That's good. And definitely we want to keep it kind of moving forward and keep the progress. So with
We have to, like.
With Amy being able to get the counterproposal to you guys and act on it and get things, you know, definitely.
Yeah, because like I say, and the question of liability didn't come up until, I think it was last Thursday, Friday, I asked Law Director Fait. I said, if something happens out, struck by lightning, breaks your neck playing football, who are they going after? Coming out of the city because there is no formal lease. So, you know, all the. there is no formal lease. So, you know, all the, you know, responsibilities on the city and that's something that we can't.
Which I think on the flip side then, and why we were trying to really make sure that the lease fit us was because if we do have to close certain lanes in for repairs or if we weren't able to, we want to make sure on our side too that our liability is covered. And so, I mean, it's a little bit of verbiage here and there and but we want to make sure that, yeah. We're covered, our kids are covered and have access to everything. And then we're, the public's able to use it as well. So.
And I don't think things are so indicative that someone from the city is going to come out and say, you're laying three years. Walking every day when I go to work around there and their lays one and two and whatever. So I don't think that's.
I don't think that's got any point. I mean, that's what exactly what I'm saying, Rob. It's it's what what's the point of putting it in there? We don't want to give anyone the opportunity to argue.
Practice or whatever.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any questions or discussion?
Just one, one quick follow up, just timeframe wise, as far as ability to act, I guess, from from the school district side. I mean, Amy, when it comes to when you could respond, when you know who to get with, how quickly could you get a counter to them?
Sure, I have, um, directions as to who this should go to and, um, I can get it out tomorrow.
I don't, this may not be the brightest thing or whatever, but maybe when count whoever yourself, whoever else's council is working on, looking over. Give Amy a call and and on the phone, say, hey, Amy, I hate the third word in paragraph three or whatever. Or invite her, say, Amy, come over for a cup of coffee. You guys actually sit in a room together with her rather than you guys look over and see something you don't like, ship it back to her and she changes it and ships it back to you. That takes much time. Maybe just to invite her over for coffee and you guys sit down in a room together and get it worked out.
Yeah, we just have to be careful who's in the same room together, but
Perfect. That'd be great.
Yeah, I can get it out tomorrow.
Do have it to allow them to unmute themselves. Click that.
Question, which committee is most likely to?
They're probably go back into finance committee, which is my committee. It was only a dollar lease, but I guess it's still financed.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mr. Gallantyne.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. France. Dr. Fuller. Miss Sleeper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item six personnel.
Um, we have a laundry list of personnel items, um, some resignations and some hires. Want to point out a couple of the hires because they are here tonight with us. Mrs. Janet Mako, um, is, um, recommending her for to be our director of student services. Um, she comes to us with a good, strong history of intervention specialist work, um, working especially with our students with most intensive needs. So, um, she's already been on site diving in and has is doing a wonderful job. So we're thrilled thrilled to have her. Also Shannon Ember, um, is recommending her to be a high school English language arts teacher. Shannon did some long-term subbing work with us last year, um, working in the middle school. And so also have a good feeling about her work and we're really excited to welcome her to the team. We have some other classifieds, supplementals, volunteers, substitutes and, um, a student teacher as well. So with that, I could have a motion to approve. Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Mr. Gallantyne.
Yes.
Miss Sleeper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Welcome.
Um, item seven, committee reports.
Uh, the facilities committee met last week. There is a resident of the district that would like to help us resurface the concrete floors at Quakerdome. Make them a little more safe, uh, for our kids to practice and play on. Uh, it's just concrete right now. They would be suggesting that, uh, the school considers something, uh, like sport court. Cause a modular uh, overlay system that's really made a lot of progress from what I saw at the meeting in the last ten or fifteen years. I can remember it was just kind of like water through mats that you put on a tennis court that was too cracked up and you didn't want to resurface it. Um, but certainly that that's come a long way and looks like some very promising product from what we could see. They would, uh, like the A D, the superintendent, the, uh, Mr. Lenhart, our, uh, maintenance coordinator. Uh, ought to be involved in looking at different opportunities, products, whatever it is, so that this district and certainly jump in here if I'm misrepresenting any of this, would be making the choice of what product best suited our needs to where that it could be used safer for the kids playing basketball. It could still be infect effective to, uh, play tennis indoors when when weather necessitated it. It was still okay to be used for baseball practice, all that that gamut, that certainly stuff that they, uh, were considerate of and supportive of. Their rough estimates put the project at about two hundred thousand dollars. They would like to provide about fifty thousand dollars in seed money. And, uh, that always makes fundraising easier when someone's got a skin in the game to begin with. They felt like, and I certainly would agree with them, that, uh, some sort of recognition from the board that we would accept the donation before they go out and try to collect the money for the project. So it's something that we don't know that we need to vote on it right now. We just sort of from the conversations we have, give a good faith agreement that that this was a totally very generous gift to the district, a terrific opportunity, especially if they're willing to help us with with gathering the rest of the hundred and fifty thousand that may or may not be necessary to complete the project in the long run. Certainly more than 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 an enhancement, uh, a an upgrade to to that at core. I don't know if you've been down there, but you know, a young person takes in the dive on on concrete like that, you, uh, skin the knees up pretty quick. And I I I've never been on the stuff, but my understanding is it's it's pretty effective, uh, for that type of use.
That's versatile then for tennis and for basketball for all of them.
That was what we discussed was to make sure that it still had at a minimum the opportunities to be used for what it's being used for now, hopefully expanding it. Looking into how that gets, you know, uh, the various lines and whatnot that get put down on those kinds of things and holes for volleyball nets or tennis nets or however you want to get the batting cage. There's a lot of, uh, moving parts that would need to be addressed and solved before we committed to it. Generally speaking, the 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 companies that provide sport court or field turf or our hardwood floors for the gymnasium, uh, do a pretty thorough job in helping places like us make those decisions to make sure we're not, uh, missing, missing something, you know, they've, uh, it's fortunate sometimes to have the opportunity to work with contractor that's already been part of making the mistakes that could give us headaches and, uh, can let us know where to be. So that's that that came up and, um, we need to get back to them and let them know thumbs up or thumbs down. Uh, if there's concerns, you feel like you need a little more time to think about it. That's fine too, but if we can give them a approval or if there's more questions that you'd like us to to ask of them, uh, like us to ask of them, they they prefer to remain anonymous right now. And, uh, our intent is to honor that.
So just, I think that's wonderful. And obviously you'd have somebody generous enough to want to do that and to help spearhead that. So I guess just a couple of questions related to that. They, one is currently I'm supportive. I think that's wonderful. When it comes to defining the scope of the project or what we're getting together, is that going to be clear enough that we know that there's not something that changes along the way and the dollar amount goes from two hundred to two fifty? And now if somebody feels like we changed anything on them.
What we talked about at the meeting was their actual estimate is closer to a hundred and fifty-five, a hundred and sixty.
Okay.
And we knew that we may need to spend about twenty thousand dollars to upgrade the way the batting cage is raised and lowered off of the area where it's used at. And that left us with about twenty thousand dollars for the custom materials to go up over the eighteen months that's probably going to take us.
Got it covered.
And quite, I mean, this is something that somebody stepped up as donors. And and what we talked about was would if we're ten thousand shy? Certainly would have to come back to this board. But I would think that if the school district could get two hundred thousand dollars of improvements at ten grand, that, uh, and then in pre-improve safety as much as, uh, I believe this will for our kids that have become, so yeah, we kind of.
Yeah. Not going to change, um, have somebody feel like they had something.
We would hope not, but it could. Who knows? I know I've been waiting, uh, eight weeks on Styrofoam for my roof at work. Wow, that's not available and went up twenty percent.
Yep. And then with with that individual spearhead, the rest of the fundraising, does that go to booster clubs and whatever? But they were in that perfect. Okay. I think that's wonderful.
Working with Mr. Fortney and the booster clubs to get folks.
That's awesome.
Sounds good to me.
Is it, I mean, are we safe to have Amy or Julie or somebody tell them that we'd like to move, take the next step forward?
That sounds good.
Good.
We, I mean, if there's hesitation or reservation, we can wait till next month, I'm sure.
Item eight. Um, the only thing I have for you tonight is the gifted coordinator supplemental M O U exhibit K. Um, again, um, to cover that position since I will no longer be filling it. It's like a motion to approve that item.
I move.
Mr. Gallantyne.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. France.
Yes.
Dr. Fuller. Miss Sleeper. Motion carries.
Item nine, two executive session. So disciplined compensation of a public employee and or investigation of charges and complaints against or complaints against a public employee.
So moved.
Mr. Gallantyne. Mr. France.
Yes.
Dr. Fuller. Miss Sleeper.
Yes.
Motion carries.
With no action to follow executive session. Thank you all for coming.
Appreciate it.